Do me a favor and share from microbiota to live to the lives of wherever else you want to attend.
Share from your microbiota?
Yeah, from microbiota.
How do I do that?
Just go to microbiota, share a lot of video.
Welcome, everybody, to the Board of Education's special meeting in pre-15 on Sunday noon first. Thank you all for sharing your Sunday afternoon with us. Call to order.
Mr. Bibb?
Here.
Mrs. Jonas?
Here.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Here.
Mrs. Stewart?
Here.
Mrs. Hausfeld?
Here.
Let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to your flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.4, safety briefing. There are two exits right behind me. Item 2.1, motion to adopt the agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausfeld?
Yes. Item 3.1, regarding superintendent search. The purpose of this meeting is to consider and possibly take action on the contracts. For the superintendent's search, we've had a couple of meetings with K-12, discussions with K-12, and we've discussed their services and what they're going to provide. So I think we've all wanted to just get a moment to vote on that relationship and the contract with them. So I'd like to get a motion to move forward with contracting on the silver level service with K-12.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the silver level service with K-12.
I'm a second.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausfeld?
Yes.
Another part of the presentation or discussion this afternoon is about possibly, is to consider and possibly take action regarding Diversity Day.
So I am the one that brought this to the board to make a decision. I think that this should be done in a way that both Anderson and Turpin can participate. It's a lengthy presentation. It takes a full day at school. There's guest speakers coming. It's a little bit more than just an in-house event. And so I wanted to see it offered to both schools. And I don't know how that would look if we do it in the evening or the weekend or how. But I would like to look at making it possible for students at both places to attend. That was why I had to put up the agenda.
We wanted it after hours then?
If that's how it would work, so that we can make it so Turpin and Anderson can participate. That was my hope for the event, is to look into making it available to both schools.
I just have some comments, I guess, about Diversity Day. I mean, I agree with you, Katie. I would like to see this offer to everybody on either the weekend or outside of school time, not on the taxpayer dime. I think the community spoke in November and they made it clear that they did not support the CARE program, which was professional development lessons on cultural responsive teaching, which in essence is CRT, Critical Race Theory. And this Diversity Day program is, as the leader of the teacher quoted in the Cincinnati Inquirer, "This program is racial reconciliation exercises." And also, to be very clear, this Diversity Day was not at all a day devoted to creating understanding and awareness of the rich ethnic makeup of our nations, as the parent permission slip originally stated. This day is for students, basically, to examine their privilege and to become aware of their own microaggressions and implicit bias, and focus on black and white race relations. Specifically, on the Diversity Day, there was an activity called the Step to the Line Activity. It had students answer 50 yes-or-no questions. They crumbled it into a ball, threw it in the middle, and then other students got to read it aloud, other kids' questions or answers aloud. And just to read a couple of those questions, so the community and everybody clearly knows about this Diversity Day, a couple of these questions were: Have you ever been embarrassed or ashamed of your clothes, your house, or your family car when growing up? Do you have any immediate family members who are doctors, lawyers, professors, engineers, or other white-collar professionals? Has pimping or prostitution, drugs, or other illegal activities been a major occupational alternative in the community for which you were raised? Has any woman or man in your family, including yourself, ever been physically or sexually assaulted in any way? And does your family have health insurance? To me, I don't understand how this is the business of student staff or leaders in this exercise. And it's also important to note that one of the guest speakers on their mission statement, it is, and I quote, "Unite and ignite people for racial justice." How is this not political and indoctrination to the students? "In these unprecedented times of learning loss, we cannot afford to minimize additional instructional time for programs such as these during school time. I'm in favor, like Katie said, of offering this during outside of school time, open to Anderson, Turpin, and the public, with no use of taxpayer dollars and no extra credit to any students."
Thank you, Sarah. I agree with both you and Katie in their statements. One more out, first, now I have to ask you to leave.
Great.
Okay? Thank you. So the, I'm not done yet, but please let me finish here. Those quest, the questionnaires for the actual Step Up Day, there were 50 questions. There's more than just those, the ones that she read. Have you grown up with people who are servants, maids, or gardeners working at your house? Have you ever skipped a meal or went away from a meal hungry because there wasn't enough money to buy sufficient food? Have you received less encouragement in academics or sports because of your appearance? Have you ever been discouraged or prevented from pursuing academic or work goals or tracked into lower levels because of your race, class, or ethnicity? What other things or baggage is on your mind today? These questions, if you actually look them up and search them on the internet, you will find much about privileged walk lesson plans, a lot of which originated from somebody by the name of Peggy McIntosh. She has several essays out there of white privilege. Her name is directly tied to the White Privilege Walk. But curiously, in 2021, she backs away from those and is quoted as saying, "I did not invent the exercise you refer to. In fact, I urge people not to undertake these exercises. They are too simple for complex experiences related to power and privilege. I do not know where they originated, and they seem to answer a craving for instant one-size-fits-all. I think they are counterproductive." So most of these activities are performed at college-level courses, and educators and activists use privileged walks as experiential activity. When you look at more, look more into it and you do more research, all of these privileged walks come down with debrief questions. And these debrief questions are instructions on, the instructors, on how to summarize. During an after-privileged walk, participants might experience an array of intense feelings, no matter their position, on the front or the back. It would be detrimental to end the activity with potentially traumatic or destructive emotions. The point of the brief debrief session is to ask provoked questions and to help participants realize what exactly they were feeling and muster the courage, muster the courage, to articulate and to participants acceptable level. So then I want to go to some statements and testimonials I've received over the past week relating to this second announcement with this Diversity Day. Extra credit is being offered to students who attend, which in effect academically penalizes those whose parents do not grant permission for attendance. Voters made it very clear in the November election that we do not want to fund social justice and political programming. That is inherently divisive. Not only will staff be paid for their time to lead such a program, but they have requested substitute teachers to support the classroom instructions they have abandoned. The privilege exercise includes invasive and concerning questions. How is the business of the student staff or leaders of this exercise? These questions and other content focusing on agenda-driven definition of social justice seems more like political programming and indoctrination. This type of programming could take place outside of school hours to the larger community and can be observed and attended, including parents and taxpayers and staff. We've got lots of emails about that, which is why Katie, I think, brought it up. This is titled Diversity Day, but the program focuses specifically on narrow examination of black and white race relations and privilege. Where is the focus on diversity of thought and inclusion and appreciation of a broader ethnic population and worldview? How about an examination of positive black and white relations? To have a true Diversity Day and a true attempt to increase one's appreciation of diversity, diverse ethnicities and cultures, why not include people from our own community? Why not include musical presentations, art presentations, inspirational personal testimonies from people in our own local and grade community? This encourages unity and appreciation for students and community members. I do believe the organizers of the Diversity Day have good intentions. However, their focus appears to be narrow and again presents the very, very limited scope of understanding of diversity that is peddled by CRT and anti-racist charlatans in media and academic release. There are thousands upon thousands of educators and journalists, academics, parents, think-tank members, researchers, political leaders, community members, and teachers of minority ethnic status who do not define diversity in this way and rather highly oppose to it. As a taxpayer for over 30 years in Forest Hills School District and with four children as graduates of the Forest Hills system, I am not in favor of any public funding being used for this event and also do not favor using regular class time for this event in any manner. I vote, I pay my taxes, I own property in the Forest Hills School District, and I go to the Forest Hills School District meetings. Eliminate this event and connection with Forest Hills due to the event. The privilege exercise includes invasive and alarming questions. Are we equipped and prepared to provide the mental health and support for the fallout from these questions? How is this the business of the students, staff, leaders of this exercise? Again, as a taxpayer, parent who graduated from Turpin High School and whose son graduated from Turpin High School, I find this extra credit Diversity Day nothing short of programming these students' minds. I also think the idea to grant extra credit is a bribe attempt to force attendance, and it is despicable. Let the event stand on its own regardless of extra credit. Feel free to use the facilities after hours on your dime. Those are all statements that I've read, testimonies that we received this week. I will also read to you another testimony of an African-American father that lives in this district. "I learned about this Diversity Day at Turpin High School recently. I was actually excited to learn about it and some of the exciting stuff our district was taking to celebrate cultural diversity. I understand this has become an annual event. My high school years included a multicultural week. It was focused on the celebration of our cultures, filled with multinational foods throughout the week as speakers differ cultural histories. The assembly was filled with traditional musical performances and more modern cultural exhibitions: Polynesian fire dancers, Chinese martial arts demonstrations, European poetry interpretations, Irish dancing. After I was able to review the questions scheduled to be asked, the video content and guest speaker topics, I was beyond disappointed and offended by whatever group approved the Diversity Day structure and content. According to one of the videos, "Growing up Black in America", if this is portrayed as the experience of being black in America, then our schools have completely missed the boat on diversity and are failing to be inclusive and shredding our sense of belonging. Maybe their hearts are in the right place, and I respect that, but the implementation is completely off-base, biased, and offensive. If my multicultural children were eligible for this event, I would opt out hard-casts." I also have one more thing to read. This is, there's a lot of misconception that we don't have diversity experience in Forest Hills. This is from a mother of a Forest Hills student. This is their experience through Forest Hills. "My son attended ARAM entry, and every year in May, we have Adventure Day that turned into World Culture Day. Each grade was given several countries, areas of the world, and would go from section to section throughout the day, learning about the geography, population traditions, history, religion, et cetera, about that specific country and area. Each grade level was different, so as the child progressed through AR, each year would be different. At Turpin, for several years, the band director invited Biocodo Cultural Center to the school for a week that would teach them, teach the band students African dances, African drumming, and the culture of West Africa, and then they would have a joint performance at the end of the week. I specifically remember April 2001. This was the year of the riots from the resulting death of Timothy Thomas. Biocodo was to have their performance, but then the city instilled a curfew. Luckily, Biocodo was able to come and perform the actual, and actually had police escorts. This was a great teaching moment for those students who participated that year. It was very interesting to learn the several public speakers speaking at the board meeting. They spoke as if no adventures outside of Anderson Township. My son took drone lessons at Biocodo for a while when he was young. He's been to many, he has been to many diverse summer camps in the city, all over the city, all over Ohio. Some of his earliest life encounters are with people of all shapes, sizes, and colors and abilities. Just because we live in Anderson Township doesn't mean that we're not exposed to other cultures. That is a very narrow-minded thinking."
So those emails are very picked from the many emails that we've got. So I'll start, so there's that. I'm going to put that aside for a second. Because we got many, many emails also with their testimonies from the alternative of what you just read. I mean, I'm about 45 deep. I still haven't been able to go through all of them. We also heard from a current black student who said that this has made him feel that he is not worthy here at all. So that's his experience. What I'm going to say right now, though, is the takeaway from all of this is that you all lied about the reason for interfering with Diversity Day. You said it was because of the process. Am I correct, Scott? That's what I was told, that it was the process, that people didn't have enough information on these permission slips. So to be clear, that was a lie, because now it's actually about this. So we're saying what you wanted to say in the dark, but now you're saying it out in the public. So let's be very clear about that. Second, there's no way I would support ever touching Turpin's Diversity Day, not moving it, nothing. It's grossly unprofessional that we canceled these people's, their time, their speaking the night before it happened. And now you're telling me you want to cancel them again and then say, "Please come back here." There is nothing, nothing wrong with a speaker from the Freedom Center sharing a presentation about whatever that is. It's the Freedom Center. Now, indoctrination is really interesting to me because it's essentially forcing one's belief onto others. But what I'm reading and hearing is that you all want to force the select emails that were written, read. I can read, if we all have another half hour, I can read the opposing testimonies. But, you know, those are also public records and can be accessed. But it feels like this is opt-in, for one thing. So other people want to force their beliefs on other people's kids, so it's anti-parent choice. You also, you just read the email that said being anti-racist is charlatan? I'm anti-racist. I'm against racism. The alternative to anti-racist is pro-racist. That is the truth. So again, think or say whatever you want in the dark, but I'm glad that this is coming to light now. So the board lied. We all know that. That's very true. Well, you said-
Why don't you take him for his word?
You said it was the process.
That's what Scott said.
You said it in the meeting, too, that, the meeting that I did not attend. You said that you were not happy about the process.
Do you know what I said at a meeting you were at?
It was video. It was streamed. I watched it. Yes, I did. So they said it was about the process. It was covered in the press. They say everything was there. But this is not about the process. That's what I'm saying. So just to be clear on that. The second thing is that, how does this even hurt people? I don't understand. Like, it's anti-parent choice. And it's forcing, it is indoctrination. It's forcing indoctrination onto other people's kids because simply you don't like whatever it is. And unfortunately, I think it's things that people don't quite understand because they've been twisted and manipulated. So I do have another question that might be for Elena or the attorneys in the audience. And I said this to you, Katie, when you talked to me yesterday. You want to vote on whether or not to have Diversity Day or... That's not even board policy. Like, the board operates up here. We're a policymaking board. I called over the weekend three different former board members and said, "Am I wrong here?" Because this is administrative. This is not board decision-making that actually happens. I realized, and I said this to you yesterday, I realized that people have politicized terms like diversity and equity, equality, and all of those. But this is just not in board purview. This is an administrative guideline issue. So I don't even know, so my question is, is it even legal to have a vote about this? Like, if you want to change that in policy so that you all can actually take that type of action, you're well within your rights to do that. But before anything happens, that point really should be clarified. The three board members I spoke with were like, "You know..." "One, it never should have happened." That was what I got. And two, that, "No, these are actual, real important questions to answer." Because is it board purview? I mean, there was no policy. We haven't had policy. We have one coming up later this month. But I mean, unless something has changed, I think that needs to be a question. And if there is a vote, I'll just abstain, because I'm not going to go down with this ship when I know there's absolutely nothing wrong with diversity or being anti-racist or against racism or any of those things. And I'm not here to, like, take the parent choice away from parents that agreed and wanted to, you know, participate in these things. So, yeah, so if you want to do your vote, go for it. I mean, but that is definitely a legal question that needs to be considered.
If it's an event during a school day, it should have been approved of curriculum, right? I mean, it's during the school day. It was an all-day event. And if it's something that should have been, you know, if students are in the teaching learning environment, it should have been approved of curriculum. I don't know that that was approved.
Scott, in the two and a half years I've been on the board, I've never approved an event. Like, that's never really come to the board. We've approved things like overseas trips and things like that. So, and I've talked to two former board presidents, both of whom have very long tenures. So any insight on that?
If they're giving extra credit for it, how does, if it's not approved, if it's not considered, you know, a part of curriculum, how do they get extra credit for it?
There's multiple ways students receive extra credit. I think this was an opportunity for that to happen. If you don't want that, it can certainly be taken away. I talked to Mr. Spencer about it. He said that he has had a conversation with teacher, and extra credit is not something that needs to happen. And that message could go out if that's, if that's what you want to have happen, because you don't want children to feel like they're pressured to attend. That is your discussion. Extra credit comes at the end of tests where there's three or four extra questions on the back that students can have choice to take, receive extra credit, extra credit. In this district, then others has been given for students who maybe bring items to bias for assistance in the class. So I'm not sure that that's the debate here, but extra credit is provided in many ways, and there's policies for student grades. So you need to take a closer look at that. I don't have that in front of me this morning. The board controls the use of the public class, though, correct?
They vote yes for the appropriations.
And the board has a policy, 2240 controversial issues. So there's knowledge that there will be in-class and outside of class, connected to class, controversial issues that would be subject matter for students to engage in. I think one of the questions there that might be on the table is the balance of that. And that's been part of the conversation with board members as I've talked through these issues. The balance is a concern. With the many things that you read, Mrs. Hausfeld, I believe that there's balance across all parts of the school district in regard to various opportunities. You talk about this one being specific. Yes, there is specific content related to this particular activity. So when we talk about a narrow focus related to this activity, there is a confined amount of information that kids are looking at. In other activities, whether it's science, mathematics, physical education, those controversial issues, sex education would be part of that curriculum inside and outside of the classroom activities. Very confined or defined controversial issue related to that curriculum, in addition to the various things that we have across our schools that are controversial. Other part of the policy speaks to the age-appropriateness of the students. And so I think as the board considers its final decision on this and continues to deliberate, this policy would be one that I would look to, to provide the guidance and to, if you wanted to utilize that, because it is a policy of the board. Talks about controversial issues, talks about balance, talks about the responsibilities of students, responsibilities of teachers, and the complaint process and all of that. And so as you continue to deliberate and make your decision, I would say that policy would be one I would take with me.
I'll just say, like, I brought this up because we've gotten a lot of emails saying that they want this offered at Anderson as well, which was why I brought it up. And originally, this entire situation, I believe, came to be because Scott made the decision to postpone that day. And I didn't even talk to you about any of this until last Sunday. And it was, you know, "How do you feel about this? I want direction." And so that is why I felt the need to bring it up, because you specifically asked for direction. And now I'm getting a ton of people saying that they want it to be offered at Anderson as well, and people saying that they don't want it offered during school days. And to have it offered evenings or weekend and to be inclusive of both schools was, you know, kind of my take on this and the direction I was hoping to give. since you specifically asked for direction on this specific issue. Because I don't know that it would have normally come up under normal circumstances or if we would look at policies on how these types of things are usually looked at. But that was where my thought process came in adding this, so.
Clarification, if I may. The Wednesday board meeting prior to meeting canvassing the board by request from the vice president, I asked specifically in an open meeting, "Please give me direction."
I give direction.
I did not receive collective direction from the board, which then caused me to go back, make a decision, which I did. And then I was asked to canvass the board, and we're here today. So, just so people know, I did ask for direction collectively in an open, public meeting on the 19th.
I know I spoke up and said how I felt about stuff then, so.
I'm okay with it, so we can saturate. That's what I told you on the phone when we spoke. That way, they can have a day. Games can have their day. Meaning, they can be happy. They get what they want. That's why I look at it.
Do you want to make a motion or are we, do you want to do a recommendation or are we going to do this?
I mean, my, my recommendation would be to look to see if it is possible to have this on a weekend where both schools are able to attend.
I fully understand your perspective, appreciate it and respect it. It is the month of May. We are closing down our school year. The date is available. We had prom again this weekend. We have graduation coming up. We have multiple activities across the evenings that conclude all the things that take place across the school year. And so, if that is the direction that the board would like to go and you choose a date, and it's a day specific, I don't know that that date will work for the buildings combined. So, that would be a consideration for you if you change, if the board decides to change a date outside of the school day and on a weekend or even on a weeknight. We're going to have to get both principals in the room to see if we can get that accomplished and try to achieve the same amount of participation. And although there's many people who say they would like to see that, that might be scheduling could be difficult. But I'm, I'm not making any decision on this. You will tell me what to do. But I would caution you to the tightness of the schedule and the capacity for one school whose students have not participated in facilitation exercises in preparation for this and another schools have. So, Turpin's kids who were helping facilitate some of the groups. So, there's going to need to be some time spent with Anderson students to be able to do the same thing so we have an equal and balanced opportunity for kids to participate in that. So, that would be another consideration.
Would not be something that maybe the Turpin students could mostly leave since they've been...
I think that's, I think that's doable. However, I want to make sure that we will offer the same opportunity for the others.
So, Scott, you're saying that it is within the board's purview, they need to, we need to, because we're setting the precedent now.
Yes.
We need to now go ahead and approve literally everything that comes across that is technically under administrative guidelines and not our job because we don't actually have a policy necessarily about this.
Well, we have a policy on controversial issues.
Right, but I'm trying to-
My decisions up to this point, it is my opinion, but it is the board's arena, so to speak. It's my opinion that the controversial policy that I'm working within based on conversations, iterations, alterations, that even though there are some that are not appreciative of the activity, that we have gone above and beyond what we typically have in the past, I don't know if it's five or six years, but as many years as this has been going on, to review and revise. So, those things have taken place and if, that's why I'm... So, if the board makes a decision to vote on these types of things, I don't know that they can't and I don't know that they can't.
There's a precedent, that's being said, that's one. And two, we're also being very clear tonight that this was never about the process. I'll reiterate.
I think that's your opinion and not what we all thought too. But I would like to make a motion that Racial Diversity Day at Turpin High School, one, shall not proceed during school hours and, two, shall not be conducted or further organized during school hours or through the use of school or taxpayer resources. This doesn't preclude the holding of racial diversity or racial awareness Diversity Day as an after-school or weekend event consistent with the authority for the general public use to utilize school premises for public meetings pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 3313-77 and School Board Policy 5730 through and provided that no employees of the Forest Hills School District shall provide an incentive, including extra credit, to any student for attending such event or similar event. So, that would be my motion.
I'll second.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Bib?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
No, I won't have any part of this hate-filled nonsense.
Mrs. Stewart?
I'm sorry, I'm thinking. That was a little different than my original intent today. Can I see exactly what you just said?
Sure.
So, typically with extra credit, you have to do like a report or something. Like, it's not just attending, but I don't know that we should be making decisions about what teachers get extra credit for. I understand that the incentive to go to this could have been questionable, but I don't know that it is our place to say what teachers can or can't offer extra credit for. Like, sometimes extra credit is offered for going to a musical. Sometimes it's offered for going to other things. Sometimes you write a report. Something like... Absolutely. I just have a hard time telling teachers exactly what they can and can't offer extra credit for. And I don't want to get into a situation where we are like having to approve or we shouldn't even, I don't think we should be approving whether teachers get extra credit and what they give it for. It's kind of, that's not our job to do.
The thing is, the record request of the teacher putting this presentation on was in, was specifically going after AP students for extra credit to attend. And that's singling out a certain group for extra credit? That doesn't seem right.
I understand where you're coming from. I just don't know that as a board, we should be telling teachers if they can and can't offer extra credit for. That's all. Like, that gets like very into the weeds on what can and can't be. Like-
So, you took that line out?
I, I am, I'm just not a fan of that line. I don't want, I don't want to set the tone that we are now approving extra credit opportunities. I mean, I like that this event is an opt-in and it's the parents' right to choose whether they want to. I still like the idea of both schools being able to participate if we can feasibly make that happen.
I thought we were in the middle of a vote about the debate.
No more, please.
Is that all? I don't want to say that.
Rules like your policy.
Y.S. Get him out. I don't like, I want you to be able to talk to the principals and see if it's possible to find a date that it can work. I don't want to give you a specific date. I don't want to tell you it has to be a specific Monday, like, or a specific Saturday. Like, I want to see if both schools are able to participate in this event and it be during evening or weekend hours if that is, that is what I would like to see. So, like, not proceed during school hours, I am okay with because I want it to be something that both schools can go to. That was-
I, I think at this point that it was, they should have a conclusion like the votes.
Okay, so let's consider this vote, the vote. So, let's conclude the vote that Sarah, that the amended, what Sarah put out.
Yes.
We have to conclude like that whole entire thing. So, do you agree with that or not?
Okay, that's the whole thing, but you can look at it and think.
I already said it.
Anyway.
I'm not a fan of providing any incentive to get somebody out of class to do something else. Especially if it's not related to that specific subject at the time. That's, that's an all-day event.
Can we suggest?
Yes.
If we finish the vote on this, then perhaps we could have more discussion.
Okay.
The, the yes, when we're done. If it's no, then we can have more discussion.
Okay. So, no on this one.
So, that's, we could, so now would you like to have more discussion or maybe?
Yes.
So, I would have made a motion that, oh wait, would I have to use something else?
No.
I would have been-
I think we can start. I can probably just add now.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that the Racial Diversity Day at Turpin not proceed during school hours and for it to be conducted on an, let's see, after hours in a way that both Turpin and Anderson can participate.
Are you using school and taxpayer resources?
If you would like to make a separate motion.
Are we still having discussion that was the person, that motion?
Yeah, but if, if you would rather... The part, my biggest concern was the, this part.
Extra credit? Do you want them to get extra credit for attending or not?
I don't want to tell teachers what they can or can't give extra credit for.
You don't want extra credit?
I don't want to have to tell them what they can get because I can't believe that they give up. And if they do extra credit for a lot of very valid things.
That might be a question of their contract. If they want to know right now and have them, then call down and offer it. I don't want to get into that. Like, telling teachers what they can and can't do in that section.
Going to make a motion to reread it minus that last line?
From, while you're doing that, from an educational perspective, there are opportunities that teachers provide for students in tiered circumstances to assist them to be able to get through the curriculum and provide other opportunities to show knowledge in that area. Sometimes that would be extra credit, other kinds of specialized projects, but it might be outside of what you might apply in typical circumstances happening in the classroom, which is to your point, I think, if you want to be. And I would just give this to use anecdotal information. After 30 years as an administrator, I've never interfered with a teacher's responsibility of providing a student grade on any subject matter that they are teaching and any collection of materials or information from students that would help the teacher be able to create the grade or provide a performance assessment to that student. I don't say that to be argumentative. I say that because I believe in teachers and I believe that they have the ultimate responsibility to be able to tell us if what they are, if the students are able to perform the, the standards and content of the class. So, I only give you that as my perspective as an administrator. It's certainly your decision. So, then I'll make a motion, the Racial Diversity Day at Turpin High School shall not proceed during school hours and should not be conducted or further organized during school hours or through the use of school or taxpayer resources.
Hold on a second.
Excuse me, any more discussion? Mr. Bib?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
I'm not part of this.
Miss, Mrs. Stewart?
Oh.
Wow.
Mrs. Houseville?
Yes.
Before I adjourn, just for the parents in the audience who are here, the Turpin kids, I just want y'all to know that I am very sorry to those kids that are once again being manipulated and toyed with because of political nonsense. So, I'm very sorry for every single one of them.
That's your standalone opinion?
What's yours? Thinking, you read yours.
We got it.
I just read it.
Everybody, please. Make a motion to adjourn.
Mrs. Houseville?
No.
Thank you, Scott.
Mrs. Jonas?
Not about superintendent.
Wasn't that on the agenda?
Superintendent?
Or Mrs. Stewart?
White supremacy.
You guys are jokes.
Jokes.
Yeah, white supremacy.
You're a joke, dude. You're a joke.
You're a big- Half of you guys don't even have kids in the district.
Actually, I do.
Non-white.
I didn't say everything.
Show us where the equity is.
I do. They do. Ninety percent of us do. So, we have a voice just like you have a voice. Now be respectful.
Bullying by you racists-
Bullying by you racist pickets.
Oh my God, look at your shirt. Please, do that again, one more time, do it one more time. Such bullshit. They can't even do that. It's not real.
I was just, just, I can, we sat out there a couple weeks, and I told you that we were...
I have never seen a voice like this in twenty-one years of teaching. Twenty-one years of teaching, I have never...
That's actually recording someone's private conversation, you're not allowed to do that.
You're in a public space, go fuck off.